Okay. Good evening. I now call to order the regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman.
Present.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Dr. Riello.
Present.
Ms. Tribble.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The chair recognizes a quorum. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for joining us. As you heard during roll call, my name is Hope Tribble and I'm president of the board. We want to thank the East Washington Street Branch for serving as our host branch tonight. East Washington Street Branch is special in our community. This library is one, is on the National Register of Historic Places and is one of only two remaining Carnegie libraries within the Indianapolis Public Library system. Our branch manager, Josh Crane, will share more about the branch and highlights in a moment, but I wanted to take just a, make a note as we open about East Washington Branch, that it has been a welcoming place of learning and belonging for more than a century and that it continues to play a vital role in the lives and the life of this community. In keeping with the spirit of openness and exploration that public libraries provide, I want to make note that we are now at the start of National Band Books Week. Launched in 1982, National Band Books Week was created in response to a surge in the number of challenges to books in libraries, bookstores, and schools. National Band Books Week continues to shine a spotlight on the value of free and open access to information and brings together the entire book community in shared support of the freedom to seek and to express ideas. This community includes librarians, educators, authors, publishers, booksellers, readers of all types, and citizens. So, thank you to all of our librarians and library staff for your efforts throughout the year to honor the freedom to read and the freedom to access information. The Board of Trustees supports you, and we believe the freedom to read is to be celebrated alongside all of the other freedoms we expect and enjoy in this country. Now, I will invite Mr. Josh Crane, branch manager of East Washington Street, to give an update on East Washington Street Branch Library. Thank you, Mr. Crane, to you and your staff for hosting our meeting tonight. The floor is yours.
Excuse me. President Tribble, assembled, just had to get used to hearing my sound, the sound of my voice on the microphone. Assembled members of the library board, welcome to East Washington Street Library. My name is Josh Crane, and I've been the branch manager here since 2019. As an aside, I tend to speak really fast, so if anybody wants to, needs me to slow down or needs me to repeat anything, please tell me to do so, and I'll be more than happy to do that. East Washington Library, often called EWA by staff members, has a very long and important history in the Inglewood area. As a Carnegie branch, it was originally established in 1909 by a gift from Andrew Carnegie Foundation. Opened to the public in 1911 until its doors were closed for a renovation project in 2016, it was the oldest building in constant use as a library in Marion County. Next slide. Well, this is good. The branch staff here consists of a branch manager, me, a circulation supervisor, say hi, Oshie. A children's librarian, a computer assistant, a part-time library assistant, and a part-time security assistant. Our small staff creates a dynamic where everyone on staff helps out with every job. Librarians do checkouts, circ staff helps with computer questions, the manager plunges toilets. We truly are free-range library staff. Next slide, please. Who we serve. The branch staff here consists, oh, sorry. Who we serve. The total population of Inglewood and the surrounding neighborhoods is 14,249. As you can see on the first chart, there has been a relatively significant uptick in our area's population within the last five years. The thing that I think is worth mentioning here is that since the area has a, has significant groups of itinerant and unhoused, the true population likely fluctuates wildly from what is officially listed. The second chart you'll see shows the racial makeup of EWA's service area. As you can see, our patrons are 46% people of color. This is very much in line with Marion County's racial makeup as a whole. This leads me directly to my third chart. As you can evidently see, the poverty rate in East Washington Street's service area is markedly higher than the rest of Marion County. Thirty-one percent of our total patron base live below the poverty line. This number includes 41% of our black population, 35% of our white population, and 23% of our Hispanic population. When we put together programming for our branch, the needs of low-income and unhoused patron are the single most important bits of information that we keep in mind. The fourth chart goes further into details about what this community needs from our branch. Access to high-speed internet is substantially lower here than it is throughout the rest of the county. There's broadband internet in 90% of homes in Indianapolis as a whole, but only 77% of homes in East Washington Street's service area. This is a glaring need that this branch exists to fill. Next slide, please. How we serve. Next, we'll take a look at some boilerplate figures, and then I will go into much greater detail about exactly what programs the East Washington Street branch has recently offered. In 2023, we had 11,040 current card, cardholders and 60,782 patron branch visits. From these branch visits, we checked out 37,493 physical items, and our public computers were used 15,732 times. In the last 12 months, East Washington Street has had 1,631 attendees for the 95 programs we've offered. Next slide, please. Over these next two slides, I'd like to highlight a few programs that I am particularly proud of. East Washington Street has facilitated the Graphic Novel Book Club for over seven years. During these seven years, the book club has discussed 80 different titles, often authored by, or illustrated by women or people of color, and met at 45 different local restaurants and bars. With such a small staff here, outreach has always been tricky, so I wanted to point out the hard work that our children's librarian, Joe Lootholds, has put in towards building and maintaining children's outreach storytimes within our service area. In the last year, Joe has put on 38 storytimes, mostly outside of our branch. In comparison with other facilities with more employees, that may not sound like a tremendous amount, but when you bear in mind that he is just one person representing an entire department, the fact that he alone has presented to 616 individuals in a year feels truly impressive. Other East Washington, other East Washington Street programs of note include the relatively successful seed program, which has handed out over 2,000 seed packets since the start of 2023, Purdue Polytechnic's Dungeons and Dragons Club, which meets in our programming room three times a week, Joe's extensive board game collection, which you guys probably saw on the wall back there. It's huge and very, very cool, and it is used in conjunction with our twice-monthly game night program, and my book bike program, which was the picture that you saw of me in the very first slide. And I, on this past Saturday, I was out at CFI's Global Fest handing out free books. Next slide, please. Another area of service I'm particularly proud of is East Washington Street's community partnerships. Of note have been our working relationships with Adult and Child Health, who have put in a remarkable amount of time and energy, excuse me, into getting residents of Good News Men Shelter out from the long-term shelter across the street and into more permanent and independent housing, and Step Up Inc., who over the last few years have set up in this community room most weeks and helped hundreds and hundreds of patrons struggling with addiction to be able to gain access to HIV and Hep C testing, free healthcare, food, water, naloxone, and oftentimes just handed out cash in exchange for completing a survey. I cannot stress strongly enough the positive impact groups like Adult and Child Health, Step Up, Westminster Food Bake, Overdose Lifeline, the Indianapolis Public Library, or Indianapolis Parks Department, and so many, many more that I don't have the time to mention everyone who has had a positive impact on East Washington's patrons and community. Next slide. Finally, I wanted to say a few words about the uniqueness of East Washington Street Library and our purpose within the Inglewood community. This library is a place where our patrons know they can come in and get out of the elements for a while. Today is a really good example of that. When they, they can just have a seat and charge their phone or check their email, or even sit and just stare at the wall somewhere, they know they won't be bothered. What I believe is great about this building and this institution is that it can provide a measure of predictability in an area and to a patron base that, as the numbers have shown, very often struggle just to survive one day to the next. And that's all. Thank you all for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Are there any questions for Mr. Crane?
Just a quick one.
Yes.
The whole idea of the heavy usage of your computers, how are you managing that? Because clearly, 15,000 usage is high. How are you managing it? And today, we saw almost everyone in use, I believe.
So, when we first came back post-COVID, our computers were separated because of social distancing requirements, and as soon as those were relaxed, we made every effort to get every, essentially every single possible desk space full of a computer because we knew people would come in and use them. And they have, I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong later, but we have the highest usage rate per available computers to the time computers used in the entire system.
That's an important figure, and I'm sure that our technology team will pay attention to that. Is there a need for continuous updating? Is that what you're also mentioning?
So, it's really hard to give, I don't have the space currently to give effective computer classes. That is something that they do downtown, but as far as what we do here is we, we generally end up helping people apply for jobs, do help them with their email, help them build a resume, that sort of thing, and we are available, make ourselves available to answer any computer questions. So, and we get a lot.
Thank you for all the work that is going into it. It's a great deal of work and responsiveness to a community that truly does rely on this branch to do so much.
Yeah. We, we see the same people every single day for years and years and years. So, yeah.
Great. Any other questions?
Less, less a question, more just thank you for all the work you're doing. It's very clear the passion that everyone here has for working in the community and identifying needs and, and meeting those needs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been really lucky with my staff. They're great.
Mr. Crane, one of the things in your report is note that this neighborhood is connected as a great places neighborhood and a promised zone, and then the, the blue line, right, is also going to affect the area. Are there any, is there anything in particular around that development that you anticipate being helpful to the branch?
Well, right now, we get a lot of people, because of the eight line, it's used all the time, that just ride off the bus, ride into the library really quick, and hopefully at some point in the near future, we can get one of those water bottle, water bottle fillers, because oftentimes on this hot day, they just want to run in really, really fast while they're getting their bus, get some water, and pop right back out again. And also, and this, our social worker, who's no longer with the system, has been great at giving out free bus passes that people can use to get to healthcare appointments, to go for job interviews, to go to a myriad of different reasons that those things go, as soon as people find out that we have those, those things can go, go very, very quick. And the more of those that this branch in particular can get, especially when the, when an eight line comes in that can take people even more places, I think that, 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 the better that everyone will be, better off that everybody will be.
Well, thank you, and I add my thanks to everyone else for the work that you do and the services that you provide. Appreciate you. Yes.
You mentioned social work.
Not coming here anymore?
Well, the social worker for the system, Yana, is the one that got, that got us the, that got us the bus passes, and so I believe that she no longer works for the system, so.
The social worker did that?
Yes. Yeah, she's the one that went, that went through, and, yeah. Yeah. And with, and this branch is special, though, they go very, very, very quickly. I mean, we get 100 of them, and I can, I can guarantee I'll get rid of all of them.
Dr. Palacio.
So, I just want to say thank you as well. Thanks to all the, the team here for wearing many hats and all that. Was that a partnership with the Indigo, or, okay?
My understanding is that yes, it was.
And is it still going?
Well, we just got some that were grant-funded, so I believe it was from the, I couldn't tell you where that grant came from, but just got some within the last two or three weeks. So, yeah, yes.
I believe that grant came from Indigo.
Okay.
Foundation, and we've been getting those for quite, quite a few years now.
So, we still get the bus passes?
Yes, intermittently, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you again. Appreciate it. It's now time for public comment, and I'll ask Ms. Gilbert.
There is no public comment this evening.
There are no public, no one has signed up for public comment. Thank you. So, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. There are minutes from the regular meeting on August 26, 2024. Revised, a revised set of minutes has been placed before everyone, and I circulated a copy over the weekend. Most of the changes are grammatical and, but we did have those that we would like to have the board consider and to adopt the minutes as amended. So, may I have a motion regarding the minutes?
So, move.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. So, the motion to approve the minutes?
Approve the amended.
Revised.
Revised minutes.
Okay. Thank you. The motion has been approved, made and seconded to approve the regular meeting, August 26, 2024 minutes as amended. If, is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call.
Mr. Biederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata. Yes, approved. Thank you. Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riello.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the finance committee, which is chaired by Dr. Payne and members, Dr. Palacio and Dr. White. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry. It might be used very rarely. Why is it not going?
That hurts out?
There it goes. Oh, okay. All right. I will review the revenue, and Mary Rankin will review the expenditures. This is for eight months into the fiscal year, August 31, 2024. We ended up at 60% of our revenue that we budgeted for, which is favorable. Our intergovernmental revenue is at 63%, and we receive our E-rate, which for the year-to-date is 220,000, and we budgeted for 200,000, so we overs, you know, over exceeded our budget amount. And also for charges for services, public printing received $34,369, which has been consistent in receiving that amount. And then miscellaneous interest revenue, we have received over 1.2 million, and for this month was $188,570. The Hoosier Fund interest has remained the same, consistent, 5.4%. And then Trust Indiana is lowering just a little bit, is at 5.33%. On this next slide. Well, oh, there it goes. We have the scope, the slope graph, which you'll see that the blue line is August 2024, and the orange slope is August 2023, with the gray being the monthly budget. The 2024 is in line with the budget, as you can see, and last year, there was a decline in the charges for services. That's the only difference right there. We've been really flat and consistent with our revenue at this time of the year, every year. The next slide is your year-to-date. Again, you can see there's been pretty much consistent, flat with property taxes. We, we only receive it July and November, and the intergovernmental fund is really flat and consistent, and all the remaining is as well. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the revenue? Okay. Mary will go over the expenditures.
Should be a slide before that. There it is. The personal services and benefits, which is the largest category, is favorable and under budget, and supplies are consistent and under budget. Other services and charges are right at budget, which is fine. Capital outlay is consistent with last year and is under budget. Overall, we've spent 60% of our budget as of the end of August, and since the eight, eight months are finished of the year, that would be 66%. So, we're running favorable on expenditures. And the graph chart is next, which shows the major categories for the month compared to the month before and the budget, with the blue being this year, and the orange being last year, and the gray being this year's budget. And then the year-to-date is the line chart over on the right, with the budget being in yellow, and it shows that our current year is under our budget. And that's also broken out by type, the largest being personal services and benefits again. Do we have any questions on the expenditures?
Any questions?
Here are some updates. Last Wednesday, was it? Yeah, last Wednesday, we had a budget presentation to the city county council. That went well. It was Gregory, I, and Kim Ubers, the DEI officer. Everything went smooth and, and favorable, so there was no questions or anything like that. They seemed to, to support us and possibly looking for more funding sources, not lower it, but more, more funding sources for us. So, we'll get an update soon. The bonds were sold on September 10, and we should receive that bond sometime in November.
Any questions?
Okay. So, you want, need to accept the report of the treasurer, right? Is there a motion to accept the report of the treasurer for August 2024 for filing for audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now have a roll call to accept the report of the treasurer for filing for, for audit.
Mr. Biederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riello.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries.
And next on agenda, I'd like to review the purchasing policy and, and special purchasing methods, and I'd like to call up Gwen.
Simmons. She's here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
At the last board meeting, there was a question regards to the policy and the methods, so I thought this would be a great time to review that.
Welcome, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I was asked to come this evening to review our purchasing policy and our use of special purchasing circumstances. And I will be presenting this at a very high level, but I am happy to answer any questions you may have afterwards. So, our, we follow the state code, Indiana state code for purchasing, and it's what I'm going to share with you today, or tonight, is the use of three-level purchasing levels. So, any purchases over $75,000 will be purchased using our competitive bidding processes, so our RFPs, RFQs, things like that. And between 25 and 75, they'll be purchased using, only after we invite three bids, at least three bids, and it's invitation, if they don't respond, is still considered an invite. Anything under 25 will be purchased in the open market using a competitive pricing. So, the difference between the third level and the second level is there's just no minimum number of bids required, pretty much. It's still in the open market. And then, of course, we also use state QPAs, so quantity purchase agreements, and those are contracts that have already been negotiated with the state of Indiana, that, so have already gone through the competitive pricing process, so we're always able to use those as well without going through the RFP process. So we're always able to use those as well without going through the RFP process. Next, I've listed all of the special circumstancing, circumstances, purchasing methods. There's 17 total listed in the Indiana State Code. I've highlighted those that we've used most frequently. So number one is emergency conditions. Number two we've used is the savings to a governmental body. We also use number five, I'm sorry, I did not highlight that one, but that is something that we, we've used and have used before, the compatibility of equipment accessories or replacement parts. And number seven, no offer received, if we don't get any responses to our RFP, we can use that method to choose a vendor. And then number nine is a governmental discount. If they're offering a governmental discount, then we're free to use that vendor as well. Those are the most frequently used, but I've listed all 17 for your review. And I also wanted to share with you that we are, I'm in the process of drafting a purchasing manual for the library, is currently in process. The manual will include the purchasing processes as well as our supply diversity program, so it will be a combined document and we anticipate having that effective January, the 1st of 2025. What I, oh, next slide, sorry, up there. So this slide is just a snippet of our reference chart we're going to include in the document. You have the full reference chart in front of you, this is just a snippet of that, just so you'll see what our staff will have to use to determine what purchasing methods to, to use. This still is not any, by anywhere complete, we still have a lot of revisions to make, but this is what they'll have as a reference chart. If you look at the, the fourth column over where it says XBE fail-safe required, that just means that we're going to make sure that of all the bids that we submit or invite, excuse me, we'll be sure to include at least one to two XBE vendors to quote the job or the work. And I attended the Finance Committee last, meeting last week and there were some questions, so I shared those here on our Q and A page. One of the questions were, are special purchases subject to review by the purchasing, purchasing, by purchasing, excuse me, prior to going to the board? The answer to that is it hasn't been required. So some I see, some I don't, we've been kind of hit or miss and I did share that. But we did agree in our, in the Finance Committee meeting that moving forward, we will have all those purchases that are being, that are citing the Indiana State Code to come through purchasing for approval. And if there are any disagreements or anything like that, then we'll then pull in Greg and Alita to make that final decision. How do we balance the use of special circumstances? What we wanted to make sure is that we're, we're using them when they're, when it's necessary and not as a convenience. Adam is very well-versed in the Indiana State Code, so they're being used properly. The only thing I think we're, we're lacking right now is documentation. When we're using certain codes, we want to make sure we have the documentation on file in case someone comes back and questions our decision, we'll have some supporting documentation for that. The appeal process, that was what I just mentioned, that if someone is in disagreement with my decision, that we will pull in Alita and Greg to make the final recommendation. I did already explain the XBE fail-safe. And then lastly, do we count firms with large minority staff as minority vendors? The answer to that is no. Workforce is not a criteria for minority vendor certification. It's basic, the main criteria is ownership, of course, you have to have 51% ownership as a minority and that qualifies you as a minority vendor. Any additional questions?
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Are there any questions for Ms. Simmons? This is very helpful, yeah. I think it was, it's very responsive to the discussion we had last time. No questions? Oh, Dr. Palacio.
So, thank you so much for advancing this. I think, I think it's, it's looking very good so far. And I, just for context for everybody's, what we're trying to do is make a revision on this policy so that small businesses, for example, those who are not able to participate or maybe, may not be as, the process may not be as accessible to them, that we're making every effort possible to make it accessible to them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Exactly, thank you.
Doctor.
You were saying that the purchasing manual will be ready in January 25? How is that distributed in the larger community?
The community, is in the library staff? It, it goes onto our intranet and they can pull it up and reference it anytime.
So that they would have access to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That it for questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report, Madam CFO? Thank you very much. We appreciate you and we'll move on now to the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Raymond Beederman and members Dr. Palacio and Dr. Payne.
Yep, so we have a presentation of one policy today and then one update with regard to discussion that occurred last meeting. So I will turn it over to everybody that's a lot closer to this so we can walk through it. Thank you.
I would like to introduce John Helling, the Chief Public Service Officer, to introduce the behavior policy.
Okay, thanks, Tisha. Hi, everyone. So I'm here to give you another update on the behavior policy. This is something we've been talking about in the DPR, DPHR Committee, for those of you who have been following that process. But for those who haven't, I thought I'd give a quick overview of the process so that everyone can kind of catch up to what we're talking about. So since January, a group of staff has been discussing the behavior policy, which is the policy that describes the behaviors that patrons cannot display in the library spaces so that we can maintain a safe and comfortable environment for everyone. So since January, we've been looking at that and the phases of the project have been a research phase where we looked at other libraries' policies to take best practice examples and things like that. We did a community input phase where we sought feedback from community groups and partners and other staff. And then we had an implementation plan where we brainstormed, you know, what do we want to see change and how's this going to work? And across all those phases, we've been visiting regularly with the DPHR Committee to seek feedback and answer questions and things like that. So that is how we got to where we are tonight, which is a set of outcomes and a new set of policy language that we're asking the board to consider. Some of these outcomes are not necessarily policy, but they were just procedural outcomes, I guess you could say, that the staff took away. So we articulated a patron bill of rights and I know, I should say here, a piece of feedback that we received over the weekend was maybe removing the word patron from, from these documents and we're gonna, we're gonna do that too, but I did not have time to update these slides, so I apologize about that. So a bill of rights to kind of articulate to the patron what they can expect, not just what are, what behaviors are prohibited, but what the staff can offer them in terms of service and those kind of things. We created a formal suspension-appeal process. So if a patron, excuse me, if, if a member of the public displays one of these prohibited behaviors, they can be suspended from the library. Now they can formally appeal that suspension and the process is outlined there. There's a third-party committee of the public services staff that reviews the decision to kind of verify whether or not it was appropriate. We produced a set of guidelines for staff to use across the system. When we enforce these guidelines, the policy, excuse me, guidelines to enforce the policy, to make sure that branch managers, for example, across the system in our 25 locations have a more or less similar approach to, to suspensions when they're issued. And then finally, we created some policy updates, which were mostly of the clarifying nature. We didn't really create any brand-new rules and we didn't really strike any rules. What we found ourselves mostly doing was just, well, adding clarity so that the public and staff had a clear understanding of the kind of boundaries around these behaviors and, and when they were enforceable and when they weren't. And we did add a big section of language that addresses petitioning, surveying and electioneering outside the branches, which is something that we're, I won't say rarely, some, somewhere between rarely and occasionally asked to facilitate. So people standing outside the front door, asking members of the public to sign a petition or to hear a point of view or, or something like that. So the next steps, if indeed the board votes to approve the changes to the policy, will essentially be communicating these changes. So for example, updating signage with new language, creating signage in additional languages where it's required. And generally speaking, just explaining these changes to staff. But again, a, a member of the public won't experience a radically different environment when they walk in under this new policy. It's, it's mostly just small changes around the edges, so we don't expect it to be a huge communication challenge i, in that respect. And I will say too, on that, the bottom bullet point there, we've had a lot of good questions generated by this project in the specific area of the youth protection policy. So if you're not familiar with this policy, and I see I used the word planned in that slide, that's a, that's a typo, I apologize, youth protection policy. That details how staffer to interact with kids specifically in the library. So when they're, when they're by themselves or, you know, those kind of things. We've had a lot of youth services staff ask for similar clarification on those kind of things, so I think we'll probably do that next, probably in 2025 or so, when everyone has a little, a little bit more time. So those are, in a nutshell, that's the project to date and the changes that we are asking for. Oh, and I apologize, I forgot to mention as well, in addition to redacting the word patron from the policy, we had a suggestion come in. In the behavior that describes what type of clothing that patron, excuse me, members of the public should not wear, it uses the term female breasts, which I believe is a direct quote from Indiana State Statute for Indecency or something like that. It was suggested we remove the word female from that because it's, was suggested that that was redundant, so we can take that out. So those are the two additional changes that came in over the weekend that are, that are before you as well. So that's, in a nutshell, where we are right now. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Helling. Are there any questions?
I just have a point of clarification pertaining to communication. If a person is banned or dismissed from a particular branch of the library because of inappropriate behavior, how is that communicated to all the branches so that a person won't be going to another branch and getting in? Is that a part of this in some way too?
That's a very good question. It depends on the violation. So for example, if a patron is asked to leave for the day because they used a curse word or, or they spoke inappropriately or something like that, we usually don't take the time to send out an all-staff communicate, say, watch out for this person. But earlier in the year, we had, for example, some pretty serious threats at one of our branches and in that case, we sent out a photo, we sent out a description, you know, we communicated very strongly that watch out for this person, call 911 on site. So it really just depends on the, on the circumstance. And I will say too, right now, we are without a safety officer, excuse me, a security officer. We're interviewing for that position soon, because the incumbent left, so that person will be in charge of kind of choreographing those responses.
So that would be one of the primary responsibilities of a security officer?
Correct.
To make sure that all branches are notified of those kind of things?
That's right. And I should also say, we have an incident report database where the, all these things are written up and every manager of every location has access to those descriptions of what happened and that includes, you know, patron information as well.
Thanks for your work on this. This is a lot of work, so thank you for reviewing it and for making those additions and clarifications. I really like that there is a mechanism for people to appeal, but I still don't see the link between the policy and the appeal, but where's the enforcement? So not clear how it will be enforced and if security services are outsourced, how they're going to know about the policy and how it is to be enforced and then communicated to staff who then will follow through with whatever is going to be required.
So security services in general are no longer outsourced at the library. The vast majority, we, we have a little bit of outsourcing for after-hours events and things like that or filling in holes in the schedule, but the vast majority of the security staff are, are employees of the library, so we can communicate with them, you know, in, in the normal fashion.
We have a very similar code and it's broken every single day on every single floor. And security, the biggest one that they will enforce is sleeping and they walk past and they do this. And I don't know sometimes if the person's really alert or asleep or having an event. So it's not being enforced and I don't know if this is the opportunity to maybe do a little bit more.
It absolutely is. And I can tell you, sleeping is one of the main topics of conversation in that staff committee and in the DPHR Committee. I know Dr. Machado and I had some good exchanges around that. So it should be being enforced and if it's not, I will certainly speak with my staff to, to talk to people. I know we had conversation around, for example, is sleeping really disruptive? But the reason why we disallow sleeping is because number one, we want to check on the wellness of these folks and number two, if we lifted the prohibit, the prohibition entirely, I think we'd have quite a lot of sleepers every day, all day, and that's not conducive to a library environment, so just for, for folks' context. But yes, if that's not being enforced, I'll certainly ask my staff to do better.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to echo, thank you for your hard work on this policy. You, you've brought it before our committee several times and, you know, really have put the, the work in on, on thoughts around language and I really appreciate your doing that and, and being that interface between the board and the staff and everybody else to, to get to a, a policy that I, I think is, balances all those needs, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, happy to do it, thanks.
Dr. Palacio.
I also want to echo Ray's words, so I'm not going to repeat him. But just say thank you. On the, on the bill of rights for, for the guests, I know we have the QR code and whatnot for the policy in its entirety. What about the bill of rights, is that going to be posted more, kind of more out there in display for everybody to see?
Yes, Mary, Barr and I from Communications haven't discussed it, but I think that can be part of the signage, for example, that's in every location, we'll also mount it on the website and if necessary, we can produce a little, you know, brochure or something of that effect we can pass out.
That was my second, my second question, for those who don't have cell phones.
Absolutely.
Thanks for answering that question ahead of time. Thanks.
It could be like a wallpaper for the computers.
It could be, a background wallpaper. It would be a lot of small print, but yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, part of, the, the rights.
Sure, yeah, of course.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Palacio.
Curiosity question. How did the staff receive the bill of rights for the guests?
I, I think they received it well. I think it wasn't a concept that, that some of the staff on the project committee were familiar with, so I think the first question was, well, what does that mean? And, and are, are, are members of the public going to understand what it means and, and just what's, how does it affect the balance between staff and the public, so to speak? But I think once we, you know, kind of talked about it and just kind of described it as, you know, the other side of the coin, essentially our customer service guarantee, I think they responded really well to it. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, Doctor.
Thank you again, as always, you're always so helpful. Here's a question. The manager here talked about the pressing conditions that happen when people don't have shelter, et cetera. They come in and they need support. Sometimes they're asleep, sometimes they're tired. How do we pay attention to the equity issues here? When we think about the differences in the environment and the context of each branch, which is so different. If a person is sleeping here, my gut sense from what Josh was saying is that they're not going to tell that person they have to get up and get out. So how, how does this equity work?
Well, how much time do we have? That's a, a really great question and, and one that we could talk about for, for a long time. I'll do my best to answer it briefly. It certainly does, especially when we're talking about behavior. The circumstances around the individual and around the, the environment in general do must play a part in how we work with that patron, so, you know, it's- So, you know, it's a difficult balance between, again, being empathetic to the individual, but then also being mindful of the environment, the library environment as a whole, and making sure that it's conducive to everyone's use of the library. So we don't want to wake people up if they're tired just because, but we do want to, well, like I said, just create an environment that we know is going to be beneficial for everyone who walks in. So the long story short, when we train, for example, our persons in charge, as we call them, our PICs, we tell them the rule of thumb to know when to intervene and when not to intervene is to ask yourself, is the behavior that I'm seeing disruptive or destructive? And if it's not, it's probably not a problem. But if it rises to either of those things, then we probably need to take some kind of corrective action, whether that's a simple, hey, you know, can I get you to stop doing that? Or asking someone to leave the building. That's kind of a case-by-case system. To your question about equity in service, we just do the best we can to build the structure of services at each individual location to suit that community. So folks like Josh write community action plans or CAPs every single year to provide the sweetest services that the branch offers. So we try hard to provide a baseline of library service everywhere, obviously, but then add on additional services that we think the community might benefit from, if that makes sense.
It does make such good sense, John. I wonder if the language of destructive and disruptive might be embedded in the text.
Sure. Could certainly be.
I would recommend that, particularly after hearing Josh's comments, because that caring ethic makes a difference.
Absolutely.
And how we care for the individuals in the community and their, and their lives does make a difference. So I would recommend that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a comment on that, Dr. Matata. It does address this. It talks about in defining what the problem behaviors are, it asks about disruptive actions. And then when it defines, when it defines sleeping in particular, it talks about for extended periods of time or continuing after to be awakened by library staff. So I think that it gives some discretion for those individual situations that occur at a branch or in an individual application. So I think that we may address that, but I echo your concern.
We can certainly place that more prominently, for example, in the guidelines for enforcement that we give to staff. We can make those two words much more prominent.
Very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Payne?
If you've already answered this, I heard our branch manager here talk about how the social worker had assisted him, and I think it was getting bus tickets. So I'm wondering how the, how our social worker could assist you, because this is so comprehensive, in any of these areas. Have you used her services?
Absolutely. So Yana sat on the project committee. So she came to all of our meetings and she did outreach to some of the community partners, for example. I can't remember which ones right now. But she was, she was involved in depth in this project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Riallo?
I'm sorry. Thank you. She and a couple of staff members I know, I've watched at Central, are excellent at diffusing things and are very respectful and get people back on track. Everyone doesn't have that ability. And sometimes the security isn't exactly where one needs to go to kind of fix a situation, remedy a situation. Is there training for everyone to have? Some of that skill is really learned and just innate as well. But are there trainings to help people to diffuse rather than kind of come in kind of hard?
There is, yeah. We call that de-escalation training. That's part of the suite of trainings that Talent Development Department offers. I agree, sometimes it's innate, sometimes it comes with lots of experience working with folks in difficult circumstances, but we do offer that training.
Yeah. Whenever they come on board, they get the training as soon as they come on board.
Is there any updates as well? So someone could have been here for 15 years and not have an update?
Yeah. So every year, they should be taken in. And once we have the security officer on board, that will be part of their task as well.
Thanks. And just for clarification, is that the de-escalation training is just for security? Is it for all employees? Thank you.
Or public safe services? Safe.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, but I want to commend you, John, and others who worked on this, for the considerations you've given to all aspects of the dynamics of being a public, open, invitational kind of agency. And you guys have taken a lot of time, word by word, on these things. So I just want to commend you for that, because many organizations are not that particular about the words and then the definition of those words. And the major example was to hang up on patron, a person, or what have you. But I want to commend you guys for the consideration that you put into this effort.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Is that it? Everybody's waited? Great. So we have Resolution 62, 2024.
61.
I'm sorry, I'm in facilities. Pardon me. Resolution 61, 2024, approval of revised policy, renaming policy. So this is, this is as it was passed from committee. Renaming policy 407 as patron behavior policy. And the policy received, or the resolution received a positive recommendation from the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee. So the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes. So I propose an amendment to the policy to reflect the two changes discussed this evening, one of them being removing the word patron from the beginning. It's going to be part of a more global discussion that's occurring with the strategic plan about how we refer to invitees to the library. We all use our own word for it, but we're going to come up with a uniform word for it. So I, that is one part of the amendment. And the second proposal for the amendment is to remove the word "female" in front of breasts as in describing clothing to be worn or not to be worn in the library. And so we'll need a motion in a second for that.
Yes.
Well, I guess I did the motion.
Yeah, there's been a motion.
Yes.
Seconded.
So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
So I reflected that I wrote as amended on the resolution.
Okay.
Provided we pass the amendment. I guess I can scratch it out.
Okay. So hearing no additional discussion on the proposal as amended, we now move to...
You need to vote on the amendment.
Vote on the, oh, we need to vote on the amendment. I apologize. So voting on the amendment, which removes the word patron from the title and also removes the word "female" in section, I don't know, 407. Dr. Palacio?
So just for context for everybody, would the chair or Dr. Riallo share why we're removing the word patron?
I'm happy to. Or Dr. Riallo, would you like to?
You can.
I'm happy to talk about it.
Luis can do it better.
Pardon me?
I was thinking by the history that Luis gave us, maybe he can do a better job of describing that.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Dr. Palacio, I will start the conversation to say that during the, our strategic planning session, and Dr. Palacio, Dr. Riallo, and I are members of the Board Strategic Planning Committee, we had a conversation about the word patron. And from several perspectives, there was, there was pause. Dr. Palacio talked about it from his response as a speaker of Spanish. There were other perspectives in terms of gender, as well as in terms of class and colonialism. Thank you. And so we determined during our strategic planning meeting not to use the word, but we also recognized that this is a word that has been passed down and used over the ages in the library. We also understand that there has been not discuss, not just discussion of it here, but more broadly in the library culture. And so we determined to not use it in the strategic plan while we gave space and room for our stakeholders to talk about what would be the best outcome for addressing that. And so at the same time, the review and the hard work on this policy was occurring, and it came to us with the, with the word patron. So we thought it would be useful to at least give a nod to and acknowledge that we are right now responding to the challenge that that conversation and our strategic plan brought to us. So we removed it from the title. We didn't, we weren't doing a global, but to acknowledge that we are, we as a system are planning to take a deeper look at that. So that is my explanation around the word patron. Anything you'd like to add, Dr. Palacio?
Just for context, in English, patron doesn't have a gender, I believe. English is not my first language, so. In Spanish, patron, literally, you would write it the same way, but it would be assigned to a male. So it's, and it comes from Latin and other languages before that. And in the, during the colonial times, it used to be assigned to the master of the land, right? We would call the landlord in English. But that also conveys a history of enslavement of people. So it's, for me, hearing that word at the beginning, when I joined the library, it was a little off. But I learned that in English it's fine. It's used as kind of a sponsor or some sort of guest sponsor kind of thing. So it's me being, learning how to use that word in English. But then hearing from other English speakers, it kind of brought me back to that original being a little off. So I'm glad this is happening. Thanks for bringing it up.
Dr. Riallo, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think that we were stuck on what other word to use, but we will get there. And I feel very uncomfortable with the word patron, but I acknowledge that it's an industry standard. It's a word that's used, but it does seem inappropriate or doesn't feel good. So I'm glad we're starting to have the conversations.
And personally, for me, it was a surprise, but I'll also bring up an example of, in my own work, where something that was kind of age-old in terms of the way we do standard business was changed. And Lolita and Mary may know about this. We used to have a comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, which used to be called CAFR. And that is used around the country for the annual reports that public organizations did. And it was raised by people in South Africa. The CAFR sounds very similar to a word that is used to refer, a slur that is used to refer to black men in South Africa. And actually read the history of it more recently. But as a result, this that organization called, the Organization of Public Finance Officers around the country, changed it. And this is something that, again, was age-old, so they switched it to annual comprehensive financial report. And so I just wanted to bring that up as an example. Yes, there are often things that we've used, we've become accustomed to, that we've, that we've normalized. But there is also a way to be thoughtful and mindful of how others may be impacted by it, or some of our stakeholders. So I appreciate also the willingness to undertake the conversation around the issue.
I probably shouldn't say this, but in, I came upon this word in South Africa in terms of a derogatory term for the African-Americans or, no Africans. And I found that it was more derog, I guess, derogatory than the N-word. And really, it represented the N-word there. So when you start to use acronyms and abbreviations, you get into interesting things. And I don't know, I think when I first was introduced to it, it was spelled with a K and not a C.
It's not, that's correct.
Yeah. And so this is, again, I want to commend you for going in depth to respect what we're trying to do as an organization, all people. It takes more time. Sometime you have to get up and drink water and walk around. But in the final analysis, we want equity. We want to be respectful for all kinds, everyone, et cetera. So I want to commend the organization for that.
So I'll call for the...
Okay. So the motion has been made for, on the amendment, it has been made, seconded, and discussed, and hearing no further discussion, we please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Matata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. Riallo?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved. So now we will go back to the proposal, 61, 2024, as amended, approval of revised policy 407, renaming policy 407 as behavior policy, and also as amended as previously discussed. And it is now, it's a new proposal with those changes. So I will call for a motion to approve it as amended.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Matata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. Riallo?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Does this conclude the report?
So one last item. We, at the last meeting, had a robust discussion around a task force for looking at pay. We have, through the process of the committee meetings, determined that a task force is not necessary at this time. So I just wanted to give an update to everybody. We've had participation from several different units in the library. There is a big comprehensive system put in place that has been working on this for quite some time. We are going to not, not say no, never have a task force, but we're going to pause while that process works through, and we will take a look at the results of that process and make some decisions from there. So I just wanted to make sure that we stayed up on that, and it was a big discussion point from the last meeting.
Thank you for the update. And we will hear about the Good Wages Initiative on next month's agenda, and so we can take that up then.
Yes.
Thank you for the update on that.
That concludes my report.
That concludes your report. Thank you, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to Facilities Committee, and I know we're right on time. Dr. White is the chair. Dr. Matata and Dr. Riallo are members.
Our meeting has been boring to this point, so add... Our meeting has been boring to this point, so we'll add need to bring excitement. And, Mr., please, please. But we have 11 resolutions for your consideration this evening. And since we have Adam, we have the best. So he's going to facilitate this whole exercise. But I want you to know that each of these resolutions has gone through strenuous considerations, just for your information. So with that, Adam is going to take us through these resolutions.
All right.
Now, Dr. White, I know you're trying to inject excitement, but the, the agenda I have only has two, not 11.
Well.
That was last month.
In my committee, we can facilitate 11, but you pass one, right, Adam?
Was that last month?
Eleven was last month.
That was last month.
This month.
Yes.
So I'm dropping that, okay. Well, I retract my comp.
But that was exciting. That was very exciting. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Parsons, welcome.
Before we get to the two resolutions, I'll continue with the excitement by doing a quick review of how solar panels work. So strap in. It's a very, very high-level overview. It's four slides of very easy stuff. One slide of some finicky terms, but we'll get there. That way, we can just understand the money angle of it, which is what I know we're all interested in. All right, so in solar power, there are two basic types of solar power. One is solar photovoltaic, solar photovoltaic. I bought too many vowels. And that, those are the systems that we have at the library. The other system we're not going to get into, but just for clarification's sake, is solar thermal. That is basically a large-sized power-generating plant that uses hundreds of curved mirrors to concentrate the sun, to create heat, boil water, turn a generator, to create electricity.
Is that what's at the airport?
Uh, no, that's just a very large farm of solar, solar photovoltaic.
Okay.
These are normally only used in the Southwest.
Okay.
So how a solar panel works, light hits the panel, knocks some electrons loose. Those electrons get used, they go back to the solar panel, and the cycle repeats. That's it. We're not going to worry about the chemistry and the physics or anything like that. This is a, again, very basic setup of how our solar panels are. Again, the sun hits the solar panel. Now, it gets a little bit more complicated. Solar panels create direct current. This is what comes out of batteries. We need to run it through an inverter, which creates alternating current, which is what comes out of power plants and what our wall plugs, our sockets, are create. That power, that AC, then goes to the building, and we are, we use what's called grid-tied. So if we were to supply 80% of the electricity that we need for the day or for that point in time, the other 20% would be supplied by the utility grid. If we produce 120% of what we need, that 20% would then go back on the grid. And so it's a constant dance between what we need, what we have, and what we need to use from the grid. All right, any questions so far?
Dr. Palacio.
What's the efficiency of the inverter?
I, it differs on the five, soon to be six. I can find that out for you, what the, the, what the efficiencies are. Okay, this is the one slide where we're going to get into some details, but bear with me. All right, so electricity is, what? Oh, I didn't do anything, okay. I thought I broke something. Okay, so electricity is nothing but electrons, right? We need to measure those electrons. That's, we use a, a unit called a coulum, named after Mr. Coulum, who discovered this. So that is our unit of how many electrons are flowing through. That's our electric charge. We then use how many electrons are actually in motion. That's our current. That is one coulum per second. So we've got a unit of electrons over time. That is called an ampere, or amp for short. Okay? So you've got a flow of electricity, measured in amps. And then you've got how much work it takes to push those electrons through a wire. That is, the unit is joule per coulum, but that is called a volt. So you have amps is the flow, volt. And, Dr. Palacio, I'll do apologies. This is a vastly underestimated, way-high level. So we're not trying to get into specifics. So you have the flow, and then how much work it takes to create that flow. Power is one of the things we're looking at, and watts. A watt is work divided by time, so joule per second. How you get that is you amplify the current, amps times the voltage. So you get one watt equals one volt, amp equals one joule per second. Now, the reason we care about watts is because this is one of the two units we actually get billed for. And this is what solar arrays are measured in. How many watts or kilowatts can they deliver? Okay? So all of this to say, there will not be a quiz after this. All of this to say is that kilowatts is a measure of how many electrons we're getting out of this system. Okay? Everybody go with that? All right. And then the last one's a little bit wonky, because if you've been following along with our units, we've now got energy, which is how much power, watts, we use, times the amount of time that we use it. Now, again, if you've been following along with the units, power is work per time multiplied by time equals work. So energy equals work. You don't need to worry about that. Anyways, that is measured in a watt hour. That is really what we're billed for. And actually, it's 1,000 of those, so kilowatt hours. So if you look on your residential energy bill, once AES gets done screwing up their billing system, you, you will find, I owe X number of cents per kilowatt hours. I use Y number of kilowatt hours, I owe Z dollars. That's basically what we're looking at, okay? So how many electrons we're using, for how long, for how much time? That's, that's basically what a kilowatt hour is. Any questions about that? All right, we're done with the science part. All right, and then power is also mode as demand or load. If you've ever heard of load shifting, it's a energy savings system that some utilities use. And then energy measurement over time. Our average rate is about 13 cents per kilowatt hour. All right, now that we have watt and watt hour, and go on to the next slide, maybe. Am I pointing it the wrong way? Did I break this? I don't know. Oh, okay, that's a forward. Okay, I'll take it. All right, so these are our five current solar PV systems. I'm, I'm done saying photovoltaic PV. We have five PV systems. Those are the years that they were installed. We have one in East Washington, which is great. It is small. This is a small Carnegie library, but there are two rows of PV on the addition back on the north side. That's seven kilowatts. For example, Fort Ben and Glendale are 138 kilowatts. So that is how much power they're delivering. How many electrons per second they're delivering at peak. Now, this changes second to second, microsecond to microsecond. You can have people plugging in and disconnecting, and you name it. And so power constantly fluctuates. On a grand scale, you have companies that try to navigate this by buying and selling and redirecting power all over the place. Very, very fun job. Total energy that we have, we have received is 876.18 megawatt hours. So that is 876,000 kilowatt hours. Multiply that times 13 cents per kilowatt hour, and you get a cost savings of 113, almost $114,000. Now, Fort Ben and Glendale were just up and running in October and December, respectively. So they have less than 12 months of operation. West Perry was commissioned in 2021. However, we moved that over to another monitoring system, so we only have 2023, and, and we all have data since 2023. So we've lost some of that data. So that 149 is actually an under-representation. So we're probably closer to 1 gigawatt hour, which is 1 million kilowatt hours. But right at the moment, we're at 113, 114,000, and these will constantly keep generating electricity for the next 25 to 30 years. So, and I should have prefaced this by, the reason I'm talking about this is that somebody asked to give some information about the money, the, the impact and the money saved by putting these solar panels on. So, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Beederman.
Yeah, so, as a municipality, are we allowed to sell excess electricity back to AES?
We get a credit. So in short, yes. But it's a credit, we don't get cash.
Okay, and so does that 113,000 include credits? Or is that just a deferment of what our actual costs were?
That is just the deferment. Great question. I didn't have time to go through seven years of AES bills. And like I said, AES's website is off. So I can see if I can find that, but my guess would be it would be another 10%, so maybe another 11,000 to 12,000 for credits.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Palacio?
And is this, is this over the life so far of service?
This is life to date. Yes.
Thanks.
Dr. Riallo.
When a panel needs to be replaced, would they come all offline pretty much at the same time? So would we be looking forward to replacing them all, like one big lump sum? Or would they kind of be more distributed so that budgeting wouldn't be so hard?
So, yes and no. So when one panel, these are, the, the great thing about solar PV is that you have a unit called a panel, but it's also made up of individual wafers. And so when one of those wafers goes, like you would like your Christmas lights to operate, not all of them stop operating. And so if a panel, or if a, a wafer goes out, then you're okay. Replacing that is cost ineffective, because you'd have to take the glass off, reduce, labor-intensive. If enough wafers go out and the panel is then deemed non-functional, or if a structural issue with the panel makes it non-functional and needs to be replaced, that is, for the most part, cost-effective. And we can take that one panel out, and the systems are created where either just that one panel or no more than six out of, I can't remember how many, hundred-some panels would be offline. And it, it's normally a day or two work to replace a panel. That's the long answer.
Any further questions?
Thank you for that tutorial, Mr. Parsons.
All right. Let's give it a break. Thank you. A bit out of my element. I'm a mechanical engineer, I'm going into electrical, so. Stretching my brain. All right, so let's get to the resolutions. The first resolution for tonight is 62-2024, which is approval to award a construction services contract for the Library Services Center solar PV system project. So, uh, the project is to install a 261.25 kilowatt, and that is direct current. Once it gets through the inverter, it should be 250 kilowatts, so pretty high efficiency. Rooftop solar PV system. It's expected to meet approximately 80% of our needs daily, and will be installed on the brand-new LSC roof, which I'm sure anyone who worked in LSC today had wonderful sound effects in their office. My apologies about that. But both systems should last approximately 25 to 30 years. The current LSC roof is 32, I believe. So I don't know if you can see that, but that is the layout. So, yeah, 156, 160, 159. So we're looking at a lot, over 500 individual modules. So we used the invitation-to-bid process. Public notice went out in August. Notice was sent directly to 18 vendors, five of whom, five of which were XBEs and eight business-developed organizations. The invitation-to-bid was posted on the IndyPL website. The bid docs were available at Repro graphics for download. And we had a pre-bid conference and site tour in late August with five vendors in attendance. So again, we used the invitation-to-bid process. We received four bids, and per Indiana Code, we shall award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which was, is Telamon Energy. And I believe I misspelled Telamon, it should be T E L A M O N. The awarded cost is $439,000, $439,263, which is less than the estimated budget of $500,000. And this is being funded via Bond Fund 486. The vendor is a certified minority business enterprise, will self-perform 50% of the work. They have, they will utilize an electrical subcontractor, ATEC Electric, who is a veteran business enterprise, who will perform 27% of the work. So 23% will be non-XBE work. And the utilization waiver was approved by the manager of purchasing and supplier diversity. And, uh, Chairperson Hope, Chairperson Trivel, sorry. You had asked for a, a better graph chart, rather, of XBE spends. And so this is a, an expansion. The facilities department, that should actually be updated to operational services, my mistake, is currently at a almost 41% combined. Now, that is not the goal. We have four individual goals, but that is the combined amount of the four individual goals of 41%. The library as a whole is at approximately 36.3% for competitive spending.
That's great.
And then for the schedule, one sentence should be installed by Groundhog Day next year. And, Dr. Riallo, to your point about maintenance, this will now be our sixth installation, and this will be our largest to date. We now have a critical mass of these installations that we are looking to add a solar panel specialist company to our service contract list. Currently, it's been a, a patchwork of one-off repairs combined with our general electrician, who we, we have a contract with, but we're looking to get a more specialized company to maintain our systems.
Okay, so Resolution 62, 2024, regarding the approval to award a construction services contract for the Library Services Center photovoltaic installation project, received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second?
Okay, is there any discussion or any questions? Dr. Palacio?
Just a question on, so the 261 kilowatts? Is that, that's a peak, right?
Yes, thank you for that. That is peak.
What's the average for Indiana, or for this location?
I, depends on what month. So, for example.
The 12-month.
Uh, last week, yeah. For 12-month, it's probably in the high 50s, low 60s. Last week, it, when it was very bright, very sunny, and in the afternoon, it was clocking in at around 78%. I can discuss that a little bit further at length, about why we will not get that full 261 or 250, if anybody's interested. Yes, no? Okay.
Just wanted to know the other numbers. Thanks.
Yeah, so thank you for that. The 250 is the peak advertised. We will not get 250 kilowatts from this system, just like we won't get 138 from Fort Ben or Glendale.
Well, thanks, that's a pretty significant variance.
It is.
I didn't mean to start additional conversation. I, I mean, it is, yeah.
Oh, it, it is. That's one of the drawbacks of solar PV and why we have to have it grid-tied, because the sun sets at night, and sometimes it's cloudy, and we don't always get, you know, the energy we want.
Sure. Okay. Good question. Any other questions or comments? All right, so hearing none, we'll have a roll call on Resolution 62, 2024.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riallo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivel.
Approved.
Thank you.
Moving forward?
Okay. Second.
Moving forward?
Okay. Second of two resolutions is 63-2024, which is approval to award a purchase order for the Pike Branch Renovation Project Safety and Security Equipment. So Pike is currently under renovation, and the renovation does include upgrade of our security systems, which is cameras, burglar alarm, panic alarm, access control with the badge, the whole works. So, we would like to use special purchasing method, under Indiana Code 522-10-5, savings to a governmental, whoa, whoa, no, that is wrong. So, oh, sorry, I copied and pasted that slide, ignore that, please, I apologize. 5-22-10-8 and -8 is compatibility of equipment, and -13 is single source for supply. So, we currently use central security and communications for security equipment for all of our locations. That's 26 total buildings that we have or maintain, and we would like to continue with that same compatibility of systems and not have just a one-off building in Pike be on its own potentially, and so we'd like to use the supplier that we currently use. The total cost is just over $50,000, and this will be funded via Bond Fund 489. So, CSC is not a certified XBE and will perform 100% of the work, and so, we will meet 0% of our XBE goals on this one. Again, that's the DEI spend, or XBE spend, rather. And Pike Branch is scheduled to reopen late March 2025, and the security equipment will be installed as part of the overall renovation.
So, Resolution 63-2024, approval to award a purchase agreement for security cameras for the Pike Interior Renovation Project was also, also received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Matata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
What's that?
Make up nine more.
Next month.
Next month. So, moving on to the Library Foundation update, Mr. Beederman?
I'm so sorry, let me get back to that. One moment, please.
I have a few moments here. I don't schedule.
Okay, so September 2024 update, so in collaboration with the Marketing Communications Department, the foundation applied for specialty plates, very exciting. I remember a while ago, we all signed petition for those, so we made the application for that. We had, on September 5th, the group, library and foundation representatives testified in favor of the application before the interim study committee on roads and transportation. We learned that there, we were one of nine applications, of which five will be approved. The committee is going to meet later this month, recommend five for approval to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, and thanks to Hope Tribble for cheering us on while we were there. In addition to that, there were 178 donors who made gifts, including 92.3, Charles Swab Foundation, Comcast, Sapient Capital, and Wallington Asset Management LLC. And the Library Foundation gives more than $65,000 to the library, including the Lilian Childress Hall Scholarships, Conversation Circle, Youth Art Club, Marion County Internet Library. That is the report.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to the report of the CEO, Mr. Gregory Hill.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Board President, Trustees. Before you is confirming Resolution 64-2024 related to financial travel and personnel that occurs between each board meeting. This resolution is in its typical format, and I would ask for your approval of this resolution. 64-
64, 2024, regarding finances, personnel, and travel. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Matata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Hill.
Okay, thank you. So, the presentation that you're about to see is a condensed report that highlights activities that occurred in the month of August. The full report is in your board packet. This report will cover selected branch and programming, development area programs, system-wide program stats, it will include a partnership highlight, Star Wars winners, active cardholder data, staff opportunities, and then upcoming programs for the end of September, early Adult program highlights, the first one is Digital Projects, which is part of CMSA, Collection Management Service Area. The Preserving Community Voices and Oral History Symposium was presented by Natasha Hollenback and Katie Farmer. It was a day of learning and the ins and outs of conducting oral history projects. We had experts and community members share their knowledge that was related to their experiences with collecting oral history. Overall, that was a really impactful program. The next one on your list is the PDA Data and Drafts. This was our eighth session, I believe, of Data and Drafts, which started in 2022. The topic for this Data and Drafts was quantifying the effects of lead exposure on children's future. In partnership with WFY, this public discussion unpacked Indianapolis's most recent racial equity report card. We welcomed 41 participants to learn and build community. Some comments that was received from the attendees as part of the evaluation process, it really helped me see more how other ethnicities are marginalized. Great use of the library to host this event, and able to talk about real issues with my community. Again, we had about 41 participants who participated in that, and that was the eighth session. The Central Library hosted the Legal Clinic on August 3rd. Approximately 95 guests attended the Central Library's Legal Clinic, which assisted with criminal expungement, eviction, sealing, and questions about immigrant documentation. This is a wonderful service for our patrons who might not otherwise be able to afford legal help. The digital inclusion in August 2024, North Star Digital Literacy had 114 unique users who completed 105 hours of independent learning, and they took 151 assessments. Eagle had the highest number of unique users, and in basic computer skills was, again, the most popular topic this month, followed by Windows. Juvenile programs, starting at the top, going clockwise. Info Zone, library staff partnered with Heron Prep Academy to bring STEM resources to families attending their back-to-school night. A total of 647 people, adults and children, interacted with the library on this special night. Michigan Road, Storytime remains a popular option for neighborhood families. For this particular event, 95 patrons attended this event at Michigan Road and enjoyed reading and community activities in a safe environment. Wayne, the kickoff celebration for Host Help One Student to Succeed was on August 20th, and was an opportunity for Melinda and the Wayne staff to share library information with other mentors before the formal presentation. Also, the Wayne Township Fire Department Safety Day was on August 10th. Families picked up information, library card applications, and giveaways. And in your packet, there are some other branches that was mentioned as well, but I can only put so many in here. Thank you to all the staff or in the branches who submitted programming, and thank you to all the branches who present programming on a regular basis. Program across the library system for the month, we had 210 youth programs, which included teen, school-aged infants. We had 5,711 participants. We had 186 adult programs, which includes adults and seniors, and we had 1,155 participants. So, quite a bit of activity throughout the system for programming. Again, thank you to everyone. I want to do a partnership highlight, the IndyHumane. This year, inspired by the theme of pets, we held 261 sessions of summer programs throughout the library system. Examples of programs were Pet Rocks, animal shows with Silly Safari, Pet Dash, Pet Dash Challenges, obstacle course, vet adventures, animal first aid, and building woodworking woodshops. These programs drew approximately 8,474 attendees. At home, as well as in the library, children and families, families were able to give back by participating in crafts. They created 405 tug toys and blankets for IndyHumane through our Pause to Calls program. I believe it was on August 30th, thank you to PDA, we delivered those items to IndyHumane. We had a nice event, they took quite a bit of photos, we had a chance to go and talk to the staff. So again, thank you to PDA and all the families and staff who worked on that. We also did an adoption wagon for patrons ready to welcome a new furry friend to their lives. The IndyHumane Pet Adoption Wagon made a few steps, a few stops at some of our branch locations. This gave patrons the chance to meet a variety of pets eagerly awaiting their second chance at happiness. And again, thank you to everyone who worked on that project. Our August Star Awards, I'm going to go down and read the names here. Patron services is Alton Parks from Garfield Park. Our second patron services was Sarah Lucas from Glyndale. Peer support was Zoe Bataglia from Central. Community involvement, we had two winners, Joanne Conrad for Eaton's 38th Street, and Ryan Donnelly from Central. Our page excellence was Robert Scott from Spades Park. Continuing on, other duties assigned was Katie Watson-Warres from Outreach Services. In volunteer partnerships, we had two, Masaka Kaplan and Carissa Osborne. But I want to go back real quick and just basically talk about Robert Scott real quick. He did an amazing job. We had a couple patrons who had some medical emergencies at the branch, and he was, happened to be there, and he did a really great job of being able to assist the patrons. All of our award winners did an amazing job, but when it comes to helping people with emergency medical attention, I like to kind of like bring that to the forefront. So, thank you, Robert, and thank you to everybody. Round of applause, please. All right, next we have the stats for active cardholders. So, looking at the graph, these stats specifically highlight the use of active cardholders, referring to patrons who have utilized their cards within the past 12 months. So again, active cardholders are patrons who have used their card in the previous 12 months. A current cardholder is also defined as someone who has held a library card for at least three years, so that's the difference between the two. Looking at the graph, the graph, as you can see, as of September 16, 2024, the library is on track to surpass, to surpass last year's active cardholder participation. In quarter three, active cardholder numbers have increased from 315,702 in 2023 to 335,524 in 2024. Overall, total active cardholders for 2024 have reached 1.3 million, up from 1.2 million in 2023, reflecting a positive trend across, across all quarters. And again, this is just to date as of September 16th. So, if we continue on our current path, we will surpass 2023. Staff opportunities, we had quite a bit of staff opportunities in the month of August. One of the ones that I think we all enjoyed was the Race for Equality and Change, a comprehensive DI initiative in motorsports. That was all, managers, system managers attended that. We had about 49 of our managers who attended that training. It was presented by Mr. Jimmy L. McMillan, the Chief Diversity Officer and Senior Corporate Counsel with IMS and IndyCar, and you could probably ask any of our staff, that was really a great training, and we really appreciate it. Also, the LGBTQ+ competency training with the Indiana Youth Group, which was a virtual training. And also, we did a OneDrive Teams training for managers and supervisors, and that was an internal training. Basically, that was just helping us out with the, some of the projects we were working on as far as cleaning up the Pre-Drive and so forth. So, thank you for everyone who attended those trainings. And then some upcoming programs, looking, starting from your left, banned books read-in at West Perry will be Saturday, September 28th, from 12 to 3:00. On Monday, September 30th, there will be the Certification of MBE, WBE, DOBE in the city of Indianapolis. Basically, that's the course, is just telling them what they have to go through to be certified. And then on Saturday, October 5th, we have Women of Color, the closing exhibit is Saturday, October 5th, at the Central Library. And then before I move on, I also wanted to say thank you to Kim Muir, our DEI officer, and Lolita Campbell, our CFO. I'll kind of expound a little bit, we did our budget, we presented our budget to Municipal Corporation last Wednesday, and you guys did an amazing job, and a lot of the counselors had a lot of good stuff to say about this library, and they also gave personal stories of what the library meant to them. So, I thought the presentation went well, and thank you again for helping with that. And that's the end of my presentation.
Great.
Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment.
Dr. Matata?
Just want to give accolades to the staff who have been working against and pushing back against the banned books. The commitment of the library staff to continue to make sure that books are accessible, the variety of books is so important. There's a national discourse about banning more and more books, and our library has made a firm stand to keep pushing back and being proactive in the realm of books and the variety of books and the controversies with our library doing what they need to do. They should be commended, not only those who are in our collection, but also those who are responding to pressures and questions about why we keep having the books. And of course, we open up and have events where conversations can occur, but I have not allowed folks to come in and assert pressure on this, on this library to make and stop the kinds of books that we need to have for our larger public. So, we need to commend the staff for that, and I hope we can join me and collect, collect them back.
Thank you, Dr. Matata, and I just will add briefly to that, there's a show called Code Switch on NPR, and they talked this week about, I think one of the things I will start to say with is, I'm just so grateful that we have the resources that allow us to do that. There's a small city in Donnelly, Idaho, they have a population of 258, and a one-room library, and because of a state law, the director of the library changed, had to, well, she changed the library to an adults-only library. And so, she did that because she wouldn't be able to follow the law. What she, the workaround was that she allowed parents to sign a waiver for their children to come into the adult-only library. They waived their right to the law, and so, she said every parent has done that. But, you know, what a waste of our time and resources to have to do that, and so, I am just really grateful, and also appreciative for the work that we do and the resources that, that we provide, all of us as taxpayers, and contributing in whatever way we do to allow us to protect that freedom, so. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say, thank you, Dr. Matata, for your comments, thank you, Ms. Tribble, for your comments as well, and we appreciate the support of the board when it comes to intellectual freedom.
I also, Mr. Hill, want to thank you for the report, it's so comprehensive, and it gives us a good sense of everything that's going on around the system. So, thank you for continuing to expand that and keeping everything in front of us, and particularly those opportunities for us as board members to participate in the next, over the next month. I don't know, that one slide that you've been doing the last couple of months, that's really good, too. too. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. There's no unfinished business. Under new business, Mr. Hill has a resolution to present. Resolution 65-2024 is a resolution to approve the change of, I got it, Greg, December 2024, board meeting date. Currently, it's scheduled for December 23rd. Generally, we have moved the meeting to the week prior, so that it doesn't get into the last busy holiday couple of weeks. And so, there is a Resolution 65-2024 to change the December 2024 board meeting from December 23rd to December 16th. Is there a motion to approve?
Approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Matata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivel?
Approved. The motion carries. Future agenda items, this time we take time to discuss any items not on the agenda which are of interest to our library board members, and give the opportunities for members to suggest items to be included on future library board meeting agendas. Are there any suggestions for the October 2024 board meeting agenda?
I have one.
Dr.?
I'd like to find out more about what, how we are supporting the social services. Josh announced that, and it's been recorded, that we no longer have Yana McGraw here with our services, and we were duly impressed by her work for the times that she was with the library. So, how are we maintaining, I guess the agenda item would be, how are we attending to the issues of social service supports?
Okay. So noted. Any other suggestions? Nope? Okay. Oh, did you have one, Dr. Riolo?
I'll address it later. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. There are no, there's no, there are no special meetings currently scheduled. The next regular meeting of the board will be Monday, October 28th, at the Wayne Branch Library, 198 South Girls Schools Road, will be at 6:30 PM. And seeing no more business before the board, I now adjourn this meeting.